I'm looking for Charles to spotlight. Charles, there we go. Okay, so, um, yes, absolutely. There you are. It is over to you delighted to introduce Charles Chang as the third speaker in our hour session. Okay. No rush, you've got plenty of time. See. Trying to share my screen here.
Is it?
Just looking.
That's looking fine.
Okay. Oh, hold on, I might need to do it again. Okay, does this look okay?
Even better, yeah, absolutely.
All right, I will definitely finish by the hour. Okay, thanks to all the organizers for putting this special session together and for inviting the three of us to be in conversation about, I think, where the interesting stuff is at, although I am biased. So the title of this talk is viewing phonological knowledge through the lens of sequential bilingualism. One of the questions that was sort of posed to the speakers was about the bidirectionality of cross-linguistic influence in cases of L two learners. And we've heard a lot about actually L one to L two influence, and I'm going to try to bring in some data and insights from the reverse direction. So I'll just start with some basic question, questions in this area and then move on to two sets of results that are in this area of L two to L one influence. And then I'll conclude with some sort of look towards what we kind of still need to to figure out. Okay, so the the two basic questions in this area. And these are ones that you might be familiar with. Are basically how native speakers of one language learn to command the sound system of a second language. So that is really one very broad question that we could examine at a number of levels. And a second question is how a speaker's command of sounds in their first language, their L one may change over the lifespan. And it's this second question that I'm going to really be focusing on in this talk. And I'll be looking at two types of bilinguals. And I'll be using the term bilingual broadly to to really encompass L two learners. I know some people kind of use these terms distinctly. But I'll be kind of considering bilingualism broadly really to be a phenomenon that starts with the onset of L two learning. So really, my goal in this talk will to be will be to show what kinds of insights I think are unique to the case of examining L two learning and bilingualism and and therefore why I why I think this area is so interesting. Okay, so just to introduce a couple of central concepts in this area, one is just this notion of universality that there might be universal structures or constraints that influence learning outcomes regardless of the specific first language of the learner that we're talking about and the specific second language that we're talking about. So this is one, I think, concern of of people who work in L two learning, not just actually at the phonetic and phonological level, but just sort of broadly. And then the second concept here is the L one specificity of this process, how how various aspects of this process really do make reference to the properties of the L one. And so I'm just going to refer to this concept as transfer, but really, in this talk, I'll mostly be referring to this idea as cross-linguistic influence. And this in the forward direction refers to kind of L one specific knowledge being kind of carried over to a developing L two system, but we can kind of get multiple directions of transfer. And you know, you've heard a little bit about the interest in examining multilingualism and L three, L four learning as well, where there we can get, you know, lots of directions and potential interactions in these types of cases. Mostly, I'll be interested in what's been referred to as reverse transfer or reverse cross-linguistic influence as a source of insight into what people know about phonology. Okay, um, so getting a little bit more specific in the study of L two speech or L two phonetics and phonology, one major concept that has been pretty influential in this area. And you heard a little bit about this from Ellen Simon is this idea that comes from Flagey's work and the development of the speech learning model, which is this idea of allophonic linkage. And this idea is the idea that when you get exposed to a second language, you get input from a second language. You relate that to things that you're already familiar with, the things that you already know from your first language. And in particular, you you relate these two things to each other at the level of allophones. And so one example of this that, you know, is referred to in Flagey's extensive body of work on L two speech is the positionality of difficulty with L two sounds. So one example of this is that like an L one Mandarin speaking learner of English, L two learner of English doesn't have equal trouble with this, you know, unfamiliar voicing contrast between T and D. That difficulty differs according to position. And in particular, the T to contrast is not difficult in onset position. It is much more difficult in coda position. And one explanation for this is that while there aren't actually stop quotas in Mandarin, so in that position, there's like no allophone to relate this to if we consider allophones at a position specific level. The other principle that comes out of that theoretical framework of the speech learning model is that these sorts of mappings between the second language and the first language, they are based on a specific idea of acoustic perceptual distance. So it's not really about necessarily the the abstract phonemic level. There's there's some more concrete, more phonetic relationship that is being used to decide like what L two sound that you're, you know, hearing for the first time. What sound that is most similar to in the second, in the first language? And that linkage to begin with between the first language and the second language that mapping is going to be crucial and in fact foundational to any sort of observed cross-linguistic influence that we see in either language. Another theme that comes out of this literature is this idea that when when you get cross-linguistic influence between, you know, these two languages within the repertoire of someone who's a L two learner. There's going to be a positive relationship between level of proficiency in the second language and the degree to which that second language may influence the first language in particular at the level of phonetics and phonology. So so this is the idea of basically a direct correlation as you get more experienced, more proficient in the second language, that introduces a greater potential for there to be some sort of L two effect on the L one. Okay. So Roy Major is one of the people who expressed this type of idea where the idea in this quote is an L two that is hardly mastered should not have much influence on the L one while L two, which is mastered to a high degree should exert more influence. And so that raises the question of, okay, well, then if we look at novice L two learners, you know, should they not show any L one and L two influence on the L one? Or in fact, are they not going to be immune to this type of influence? What is the time scale of this type of phonological or phonetic influence on the L one? So that's one question. And a related question that relates to Flagey's work is, you know, when we see evidence of relationships between L one and L two sounds. Do we see evidence of those relationships being at this allophonic level as as Flagey would predict? So I'm going to start this result section by basically reviewing the results of this work that is published in this paper in the Journal of Phonetics. And depending on how much time I have, I might also talk about a related study. But just just to begin with, we're going to talk about this study, which concerns a phenomenon that I refer to as phonetic drift. So recent L two experience influencing aspects of the L one sound system. So just a quick overview of this study, basically what we have are native speakers of American English, and they have gone to Korea to basically teach. But at the very beginning of their kind of stay abroad, they undergo an intensive Korean language instruction program where they are getting like four hours a day of of Korean instruction. Most of them, at least, well, actually, all of them in this study, I may talk about the follow up study. All of them in this study are novice learners. They've never studied Korean before, and so they're learning it for the first time. And during this period of that intensive course, I've collected data from them on their English production in a reading task at multiple time points during that period. And so they're just reading English model syllable word monoslabic words like dot and heed to get tokens of stop consonant productions and vowel productions. And the data that I'm going to show are from measurements of voice onset time, a fundamental frequency onset in the vowel following those stops. And F one and F two of vowels in these monoslabic words. So let's start with just an overview of the norms of English and Korean with respect to stops. So this is just a table showing V O T by laryngeal category of in the columns here. So this is the English voice stops, the Korean forta stops, which are the closest in V O T to the English voice stops. And then the English voiceless stops and the Korean aspirated stops, which are perceptually the most similar to English voiceless stops. And I've broken out the data by gender and place of articulation because we're going to actually see the data by place of articulation later. And I've also broken it out by gender because later we'll look at the pitch, the F zero or the pitch data by gender, because we're going to see actually some gender differences and what happens. So the the main takeaway here is that English voice stops and cream for the stops are very similar in V O T. That is true for both genders and in every place of articulation. Whereas for the long lag stops, the English voiceless stops and the Korean aspirated stops, they are more different from each other in V O T. But the disparity between them varies according to place of articulation. In particular, the coronal stops English alveolar and Korean kind of dente alveolar, they are closer together in V O T. And in particular, one thing I want to point out is that for the female speakers, so these are data that are reported in the literature and for the Korean data from the native Korean speaking teachers that learners were exposed to. The difference here is something like 12 or 13 milliseconds. And that disparity is very small. And in fact, it's actually smaller than what has been reported in the like psychoacoustic literature for the just noticeable difference, the J and D for V O T in this range, which is to say, we have some indication that like the the smallest difference in V O T that people can perceive is something like 23 milliseconds. And this difference between English voices stops and Korean aspirated stops that the coronal place of articulation is smaller than that, which is interesting from the point of view of, oh, well, maybe actually if you have a female English speaker perceiving Korean aspirated stops as produced by females. They won't actually notice a difference in V O T when we're talking about coral stops. If if so, then that might lead to some place of articulation disparities in the sorts of effects we see later. The other thing I want to point out here in terms of norms of Korean and English are that for F zero following stops, the F zero after these two stop series, the Korean forta stops and the Korean aspirated stops is going to be higher than the F zero after the voiced and voiceless stops of English. The reason why is because of this F zero elevation that has been observed after these particular stop series of Korean, which are the so called laryngally marked series. There's another series of stops that I haven't talked about, which is sort of the plain or like kind of in a sense default stop series of Korean. That that stop series is not associated with a sort of F zero elevation, but these two stop series on this slide are the marked series which are associated with F zero elevation in utterance initial position. So that means that maybe if there's some sort of influence of Korean on English, that's going to going to result in some sort of pitch raising F zero racing. Okay. Let's dive into some results. So this is a two dimensional plot showing change in English voice stops over time. And I've broken out the two genders in the participant sample by color. So the female participants are in black. And the male participants are in gray. And we've got V O T and notice the scale. It's very small. It's like three milliseconds. V O T on the X axis and we've got by learner normalized F zero onset on the vertical. And each of these numbers indicates the mean value for that week in the language program. So one week after learning Korean, females F zero and V O T is here. And then in week two, it's here. And then week three, week four, week five. Whereas for males, it goes one, two, three, four, five. The upshot of this is that females, neither females nor males are are changing systematically in V O T. But one subgroup of learners is changing in F zero, and that is females only. The males do not change in F zero. So consistent with the norms for V O T of English voice stops in comparison to Korean for the stops, the most similar stop series to the English voice stops, there's actually no change in V O T because there's not much to change to begin with. There isn't really a disparity between those two stop series, but the F zero does go up sort of in approximation to this higher F zero for Korean, but only among women. For the voiceless stops, these are the results. So we've got a female learners going one, two, three, four, five. And the male learners, it's week one, week two, week three, week four, week five. And here the picture is a little bit different because males are changing here. Both females and males are lengthening the V O T of their English voiceless stops. And the explanation here is that they are influenced by the longer V O T norms of the Korean aspirated stops to which they are perceptually linked. But again, only the women, only the female learners who are increasing in F zero, the males are not doing that. I'm not going to comment on this gender effect other than to say there's some socio linguistic evidence, research that kind of provides an explanation for why males would not modulate F zero in the same way as females, especially when the primary source of input that they're getting for L two is female Korean teachers. But it is interesting that that we do get this pronounced gender disparity for F zero. Okay, so I did say we were going to look at results by place. And so in this bar plot, what we've got are the data broken out by place of articulation of the English stop. And so these are for the English voiceless stops where people start in week one in terms of their V O T. So that's the light gray bar. And then the amount of increase in V O T by week five of learning Korean. So you know, every single place of articulation increases in V O T, the V O T lengthens. But what is interesting here is that the alveolar stop series also increases in V O T, even though that is actually the stop series that where at least the norms of Korean and English would maybe predict that there could be no change there. At the same time, the numerical increase in V O T for alveolar stops is the smallest of the three. And so kind of one interpretation or the way I have interpreted this data is that there's kind of two things going on here. One is that there is a cross-linguistic linkage between stop series as opposed to individual stops. So it's not just the case that, you know, English T is getting influenced in its V O T by the V O T of Korean aspirated T. The voiceless stops of English, this natural class of voiceless stops is getting influenced by the norms of Korean aspirated stops. So in this sense, this is sort of evidence for the reality of a natural class that like a natural class is active here and there's a natural class to natural class linkage. At the same time, there also seems to be some effect of the like T to T linkage, because the degree to which the V O T for alveolar stops is increasing seems to be maybe modulated by the similarity in V O T between English T and Korean aspirated T. Okay, so looking at the F zero data in a little bit more detail. What I've plotted here are three sectors of the data. On the voiceless stop initial words, the voice stop initial words and the items that don't have a stop at the beginning because they start with a vowel. And here there's a similar type of like multiplicity of influences that is evident. So recall that the prediction behind F zero onset for English that was following stops. Yeah, for the prediction, the rationale behind that change was based upon this relationship, this analogy or linkage between stops in English or vowels following stops in English and vowels following stops in Korean. What that predicts is that you should get F zero elevation following English vowels that follow stops. Namely, voiced and voiceless stops. And in fact, you do see that here, you know, the F zero is increasing in the vowel following voice stop initial words as well as voiceless stop initial words. But that does not predict that F zero should increase anywhere else. So in a way, it is surprising or not expected according to that logic, that F zero should increase following these vowel initial words. And that's because there's no stop there. So if, you know, the mechanism behind this F zero increase is exactly as I just described it, then we should not get we, you know, the the F zero following these vowel initial words should just be flat. There shouldn't be any change because there's no stop there to relate to a stop of Korean. Yet we do get this increase. And so this is interesting because it suggests that, you know, this F zero increase in English is not coming about strictly speaking based on this vowel following stop to vowel following stop linkage, that there's some relationship between kind of the global F zero, the global pitch level of one language versus another, which is why we're getting some increase, some change at all in these vowel initial words. However, you do notice, and and this is statistically significant, you do notice that the increase following these vowel initial words in in the vowel initial words is smaller than the increase following the stop initial words, or to say differently, the F zero elevation following the stop initial words is larger, it is enhanced. And that suggests that, you know, there is some influence of this, you know, vowel following stop versus vowel following stop relationship that could arise. Okay, moving on to vowels. So just to orient us to the vowel system that we're going to be talking about. English has a lot of dialectal variability in its vowel systems. So I have plotted here in various colors. The vowel systems that various published studies have described for, you know, a few dialects of English, of U S English, mid Atlantic, Southern California, and so on. As well as the standard Korean vowel space of monophones. These are all monophones. And so that's the black here, this kind of heart shaped vowel space for Korean. And the things I want to point out here in terms of just the cross linguistic comparison between these two vowel systems is that there are fewer front vowels in Korean. And there are also fewer low vowels in Korean. And that's going to be relevant because what that means is that there are fewer high F one vowels of Korean. And there's also fewer high F two vowels of Korean. So that leads to this disparity where if you basically just measure F one and F two of all the vowels that are in the system. Koreans standard vowel system is systematically lower in F one, the global F one of the vowel system as well as the global F two of the vowel system due to this inventory disparity. There are fewer high F one vowels in Korean. There's also fewer high F two vowels in Korean. And so that, you know, sort of inevitably results in this picture where the global F one of and F two of Korean is lower than actually multiple dialects of American English. And it's probably it's probably going to be the same if we include additional dialects here. Additionally, if we look at the size of the disparity between Korean and English, both in F one and F two. It's it's possible to predict that these differences are going to be perceptible because they are larger than the just noticeable differences that have been reported for frequencies in this range, which is to say, if there is a English speaker being exposed to Korean and they are tracking this type of information, they're probably going to be able to perceive it. Okay. So let's take a look at what happens to English vowels. So these are the female learners, English vowels, and I'm going to plot the females and males separately because they do different things, as we'll see in a second. So the female learners, English vowel space in week one of this language program is plotted in black here. And where they end up in week five is plotted in the dotted black. And so what you see here is basically a raising effect. F one is decreasing, and that's kind of happening over the whole vowel system. This is the reason why we don't get a vowel by time interaction in the steps. Basically, all the all the vowels are decreasing in F one. But not really changing significantly F two. For reference, I've also plotted the Korean vowel space of the Korean teachers that learners were exposed to in this language program in gray. And there's one crucial thing that I want to point out here, which is that we can't really explain these shifts in vowel quality on the basis of a relationship with a specific vowel and moving in the same direction with respect to a specific vowel. Because for English U here, for example, English U is moving away from the closest Korean vowel, the vowel of Korean, yet the what is this? This is probably the horseshoe vowel of English is going towards that closest vowel of Korean. Which is all to say, this is the reason why this type of result I've interpreted as kind of a general systemic type of change and not a change that is happening on a vowel to vowel basis. I mentioned that the males do something different. And this is what the meals look like. So the female learner data that we just saw, I've presented in a slightly different way on the left here, where I've included both week three in the middle. So week one is solid gray, week three is the dotted gray and week five, the end of the language program here is in black. So if you look at the gray versus the black, basically for females, again, you're seeing this raising happening over the vowel system. But interestingly, for males, they do the opposite. They lower the vowel system. And this was surprising to me. But then I started to think about, oh, actually, the males they have a different learning situation than the females, because whereas the females have same gender L two models, the males are getting almost all of their input. There was one male teacher, but actually almost all the teachers were female Korean teachers. So the vast majority of their input that they're getting is from vocal tracks that are going to produce higher formants than they would produce. Which is to say, if you look at the males, you know, form and values for English in comparison to the female teachers, Korean global form and values. The female teachers, Korean formants are higher than the males, English ones. So that that actually would trigger this type of effect. Only if the way in which the two languages are, the L two is affecting the L one is acoustic and articulatory. Because if if this is an articulatory motivated change, we expect the two genders to change in the same way because the the way the Korean vowel system is different from the English vowel system is the same for both genders. That's not a gender specific thing. So this is all to say, this disparity provides some evidence that actually the way the L two learners are being influenced by the L two is it through this kind of acoustic approximation and not through an articulatory effect. Okay, so just to summarize this part really quickly. For novice learners, for V O T and F zero, we see these changes in the L one that are happening quickly in a simulatory fashion, kind of approximating norms of similar Korean structures. And in a way that shows evidence of influence from the L two at a level that is specific, but also a level that is generalizing. For vowels, we see a similar scenario where there's rapid change. Um for vowels, we see a similar scenario where there's rapid changes that are happening um in in a simulatory way. But specifically at an acoustic level and in a manner that seems to be systemic as opposed to a vowel to vowel um type of relationship. Um I'm going to skip study two for time, but the takeaway here is just going to be that um experienced learners. Of Korean, those who have prior exposure to the language also show this type of effect. But actually, they show the effect less than the novice learners that I just talked about. So that actually contradicts this idea that um it's really a positive correlation between L two experience. And um these types of L two um effects on the L one. Okay, um in my last ten minutes, I'm going to talk about um a different uh body of research that concerns. A Shanghainese as a minority language spoken in China. I've just um shown this little map of Shanghai to make the point that this is a port city, which has. Profoundly influenced the the historical direction of this language because um it is encouraged a lot of immigration to the city. Where lots of people speaking other varieties, uh other Chinese varieties have been in contact with uh speakers of Shanghainese. And then uh another important aspect of the history here is that um in nineteen eighty, around nineteen eighty. Uh China implemented a national language policy which really promoted Mandarin as kind of the national language. And that meant that people who are sort of like in a younger generation now um have been, you know. Educated entirely in Mandarin and they would not really have been uh exposed to Shanghainese in school, not like their parents, for example. And um the point of departure for this study is just this observation of a change that has been happening uh in Shanghainese between these two vowels. Where uh in these lexical sets, um so I'm referring to s- uh sectors of the. Shanghainese lexicon that are cognate with items of Mandarin where the Mandarin item has a s- a specific rhyme. So there's some Shanghainese words where the Mandarin cognate has an I rhyme. And then some that have an N rhyme in Mandarin and some that have an A rhyme in Mandarin. So these are different lexical sets. And what you see in this table uh going from left to right is that there used to be a contrast between an A and an F vowel. And at some point, that contrast was reported to be gone. Um but uh recently, relatively recently, uh has been reported to be sort of revived. Um and the question is, why is this happening? It, there is a revival in this Mandarin A lexical set. And that's going to be the crux of what we're going to uh talk about in terms of why this um change is happening. Um so this uh work was published in this paper with Yao Yao, um who is at Hong Kong Polytechnic University. And so shout out to Yao for um working with me on this project, which I think produced uh some interesting results. So there were two hypotheses in this study. One is that this merger reversal, basically taking what was a merger and then making it go backwards. Uh kind of reviving the contrast is not due to just kind of residual. Uh A pronunciations like remaining around. Um it's actually due to this language contact with Mandarin, um and in particular that A vowel of Mandarin that contains that. A more tense vowel quality, that higher vowel quality. Based upon the hypothesis, there's three predictions here. We predict that the um reversal of this merger should be more prevalent among younger speakers. Because they are the ones who are actually going to be more exposed to Mandarin, especially in the educational system. Um if we put people into a bilingual mode, we kind of make them operate bilingually, really activating Mandarin. Then we should also be able to see this reversal more clearly because you know, we'll have explicitly activated Mandarin. And then the third prediction here is that if it's really due to Mandarin, then we should see more of the more evidence of this reversal. In that lexical set that has Mandarin A as the rhyme in the Mandarin cognate items. Um and in particular, maybe some dephongization because the quality of the Mandarin vowel is dephongal actually and not monophonal A. Um second hypothesis, which concerns um a a different set of items. Um is that what's going to matter here is actually not just the basic similarity between uh eh and A. But also, which is the vowel similarity, um but also similarity in the context. Which is to say the lexical level similarity, um where the prediction is that um actually kind of contra or not predicted by. Um a theoretical framework like the speech learning model, um the lexical context matters. It's similarity everywhere that is going to facilitate whether we're going to get these influences from one language to another. Okay, so these are the um, this is the kind of landscape that we're working with. We have. Um uh cognate items uh between Shanghai, Shanghainese and Mandarin. But in only one lexical set, this Mandarin A lexical set. Um uh are we predicting that there's going to be this linkage at the lexical phonetic level between these word forms? On the basis of eh and A being relatively similar vowels, whereas for the other rhymes, we don't predict them to be as uh. Relatable because they're less similar. Okay. So um what we did here was we just um recorded a bunch of older speakers and also their children. Because we wanted to control for like where people were located in the city and what the household environment would have been like. So these two generations lived, they they were in the same households. Um and we're looking at these three lexical sets again, where the Mandarin I lexical set will kind of consider the control. Because we don't predict cross linguistic influence there, some variation in frequency and that the onset that proceeds that vowel. And then there are these two tasks that are meant to elicit different modes. Um a reading mode that's meant to really not explicitly prime Mandarin and then this auditory um translation task. Where we play a Mandarin speech stimulus and then ask the person to immediately translate it into Shanghainese orally. This is audio to speech translation and because the person is hearing Mandarin, that has to activate Mandarin. Um and so we measured the vowels and then we're going to look at the results. So these two graphs are showing the percent of vowel tokens that were dipthongized in the I in the E direction. So this is a categorical variable where we're just like observing how the vowel quality changes. And we're seeing whether it goes kind of in the E direction. And on the um X axis, we've got those three lexical sets, the Mandarin on Mandarin I Mandarin A lexical sets. And then the two colored bars are the older generation in white and the younger generation in gray. And the thing to take away from the graph on the left is that um indeed. It's the Mandarin A lexical set that seems to be dipthongized the most in this A like direction. And there's not a significant difference between the other two sets. Um and the thing to take away from the comparison with the um plot on the right. Is that the effect is enhanced in the translation task. The bars for the Mandarin A set are a little bit higher in the translation task, which is what we were expecting. Because we're really encouraging people to be influenced by Mandarin in that case. Um we also looked at the um degree of dephongization. So these are mean. Uh vectors showing where the vowel started and where it ends um in older and younger talkers. Uh in these three lexical sets. And the point to take away from the um graph on the left is that indeed, really the only long lines, the only long vectors that you see. Are for that Mandarin A lexical set. It's really that lexical set that is kind of sounding like A. And actually, um the the second thing that I want to point out is that the lines are longer for the younger speakers. Which is to say that the younger speakers are dephongizing more than the uh older speakers. And I, if the sound works, I'll play a couple of samples here. That's the parent. And this is their child. A little more dephongized and then the translation task is just showing this effect enhanced. We're like you really hear dipthong for the child there. Um and um. So that's that's the takeaway here that in fact, these Mandarin A items do seem to be more dephongized, more likely to be dephongized and dephongized to a greater degree. Than those other lexical sets. And we do see that trend more in younger speakers as well as in audio to speech translation. Because I only have a couple of minutes, I just want to quickly talk about this last set of results, which concerns. Making some aspects of the lexical context a little less similar. So an experiment two and experiment three. We have deliberately made the onsets of the Mandarin A items different from what the Shanghai uh Shanghainese item is. So for example, m- maybe there's a Shanghainese item that has a singleton onset and just an A. In eh eh in Shanghainese, but the Mandarin cognate has an A and an additional W. Now, there's some controversy about like how to analyze this so-called medial. Is it part of the onset? Is it part of a tripthong? Is it like its own little constituent in the syllable? But what it does mean is that the structure is different. The structure of now this Mandarin item that has A. Is different from the Shanghainese item. Whereas before, we were just looking at um single onsets, no kind of ambiguity here. In experiment three, um we played around with the the voicing of the onset. So the Shanghainese item has a voiced onset, which is not a thing in Mandarin. So the Mandarin item is going to have a voiceless onset. So what do we see? Um we see the structure mismatched Mandarin A items in the middle here. Intermediate between the Mandarin I set and this maximally matched Mandarin A set. And we see that effect a little bit less in the translation task, um because that sort of just overwhelming. On the uh effect of similarity due to the activation of Mandarin. And I'm going to skip this part and just um talk about uh that effect happening to a numerical degree, but not statistically. Um for the onset mismatched Mandarin A items where they are a little bit less, but not significantly so. Um dipthongized towards E um then the maximally matched Mandarin A items. Which is to say, but it does seem to be the case that these aspects of the lexical context matter. Um the structure, the mismatched items, whether they're mismatched in structure or mismatched in onset, they seem to be. Uh a little bit different from the maximally matched Mandarin A items. And that suggests that like these cross linguistic linkages that are influencing um a sound change in this case. They're not strictly about the similarity between the vowels. There's also this linkage about the lexical context that's modulating the size of this effect. Um okay, so I'm I'm gonna jump to the end here, which is basically just making the point that. Um part of the reason why I've gotten interested in this area is because um looking at these kinds of um effects within. Uh people who have more than one language within their repertoire might help to explain things that we look at in diachronic um. Uh sound change, for example, how this uh reversal of the merger might diffuse throughout the lexicon in Chinese. Um and the last point here concerns um just trying to uncover aspects of linguistic knowledge that you don't really. Make reference to or in a sense that are sort of invisible when you look just within one language. And what I mean here is um these kinds of systemic features that that we don't really make reference to in within language phonology. So I mean, as far as I know, there isn't really a literature about a vowel system's overall height. Whereas we see that type of effect, the activity of that type of structure quite clearly in these types of vowels, vowel system to vowel system uh influences. And uh similar for global pitch level. This is not a thing that we really kind of talk about in phonology, but we see evidence of this type of. Uh reality, this aspect of knowledge in these sorts of cross linguistic effects from one language to another. Um alright, so I think I'm gonna end there and thank you so much and I'm looking really forward to the question session.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you uh very much. Absolutely, yes, indeed. Right, great, yes. So uh so much, um absolutely, so many things to think about there in the all. Uh three talks of that. You now, everybody have, I think it's fifteen minutes to think about it. I think that's what we're gonna do. Thought we'd better have a a little break um before before we come back. Um so yes, I will um stop the recording.